Called all of the meeting of the mayor and board for July the 16th, 2024. If you'll join Alderman, Bernie, in prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Father, for this day, and thank you for your many blessings and blessings yet to come. We ask you to look over us tonight, that we do what's right for all the citizens of Long Beach. We ask you to take care of all our first responders and our military people. We ask you to bless our soon-to-be president, Mr. Trump, that he come through everything okay, and everybody be well, for I ask all these things in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as a.
Okay, we do roll call for making an announcement. Patrick?
Here.
Pete?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Mikey?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
And Bernie.
Right.
All right, we do have a full board tonight. I want to go ahead and make this announcements, these announcements that we are unable to do a live broadcast at this time. We're having some problems, technical problems that I'm not familiar with and couldn't help fix anyway. So it is being recorded, so when the time comes that he will be able to put it out, and it will be broadcast. So if anybody calls you our union tenants and want to know why, that's the answer. Anybody on the board usually watching ourselves, y'all, we're not going to be able to see ourselves tonight. So y'all be prepared to answer when y'all get the questions of why, that's just technical difficulties. All right, we have no public hearings, public comments?
Yes.
No public comments, no announcements, presentations, and proclamations, any amendments to the municipal docket? Here none, we'll move forward with approval of amendments to mayor and board of Alderman to July the 2nd, 2024 regular and executive session, and the July the 9th, 2024 work session, a motion and second discussion and approval. Got a motion and second, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have planning and development commission, July the 11th, 2024, motion and second for discussion and approval.
Motion.
I got a motion and second, is any discussion? I think we need to discuss the one thing I want to hear, the preliminary plat approval. This is for Magnolia Run at 20,012 Pineville Road. This is the piece of property that been cleaned, what, three years ago now? And they have finally met all the requirements that we have put on them to be able to do a development there, to meet the drainage requirements. And so I want you to know that this has been approved by the planning and development commission, it's been approved by our engineering. They've, I will say this, our engineering, Overstreet and Associates, our engineer David Ball, has been very conscious of this whole situation with a lot of requirements put on this developer. Anybody else got any discussion on this?
Just real briefly, George, just as a matter of observation only, and just to bank a point, the preliminary plat that was submitted, and I'm sure everybody has reviewed it, lots 13, 14, and 15 are only accessible from Patton Road, they're not accessible from Pineville, because the cul-de-sac ends, and that's just an observation.
Right, yes.
David, the drainage is go start before everything starts building, correct?
Yeah, I think so. Y'all may recall, I think y'all's action was to-
That's what I thought.
-do the subdivision plans, and then to, then the developer would submit the off-site drainage, which will be from Pineville South-
Right.
-which y'all will then, which will then bid through the city process and construct, depending on how those costs work out. And so we're still, this is getting step one, which was the subdivision plans approved.
Okay.
Ultimately, yeah, they've still got to do the downstream improvement south of Pineville. That will be critical to making the subdivision drainage work.
Correct, that's what I'm worried about. I don't want them to come in there and build a subdivision and say-
Yeah, we need to make sure that's done before they get-
That's what I thought. I thought we had agreed on that.
And I think, I think we did.
Okay.
I think that's what the plan is.
And David, one more thing-
I noticed there's some yellow flags already out there along Pineville Road that go from
the subdivision to Daughtry Road.
That's gas lines.
Gas.
Location.
And that may be them finding that out to be able to get them work.
Working.
So.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of documents claims number 071624, motion and second discussion and approval.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no unfinished business under new business. We've got an event that we just completed, and we're applying for it for next year, special event app in the city of Long Beach, 4th of July Jubilee. Motion and second for approval?
Motion.
Second.
And discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Courtney, you can start planning a little earlier.
Cooler weather.
That's right.
Trying to make it not so hot.
Next, we have energy efficient business solutions. I think, I don't know, I hadn't seen Randy-
Larry Bar's here.
But Larry's here, yeah, I see Larry there now. Oh, I'd like to have a motion second for discussion and maybe approval. I'll ask another one for approval.
Second.
All right, any discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Larry, if you want to come up to the mic, or if you need to come up here-
Either or, but it's kind of simple.
Okay.
The program has been in effect over two years. The majority of you and most of the populace here on the coast have never heard of the program before. It's a Mississippi Power program, okay? It has to do with commercial HVAC, air conditioning. What it does is, we need permission, the sheets that you have, that sheet is not a contract, all it is is a permission sheet. We do this for commercial businesses, we do it for cities. One of the most important things is municipalities have never heard of this before, okay? Neither has county or governments like that. On a personal basis, it's very hard to get in touch with the churches, small churches all the way to large churches. They have never heard of this before. So I'm here to speak about it, to see if it's of interest to the city, okay? And to reach out to other people to say, hey, we have done 11 businesses in Long Beach already. We've checked in on it, we have a very, very advanced equipment, that we take the readings, okay, on your HVAC equipment. We clean the condenser and evaporcoils, just like on your house, just like own businesses and so on and so forth. The limitations on this program, it is 50 tons and down. Most residential small businesses are three to five to 10 tons. But we can do it 50 tons and down, like a big chiller plant like this is not part of the parameters, okay? We take the readings, we clean the condenser and evaporcoils, we take the post readings that shows the efficiency gain that it's going to do by just cleaning the coils. We give that information to Randy at Mississippi Power, okay? They give it to the Public Service Commission. Public Service Commission drives this program. Mississippi Power would not do it if it wasn't for the Public Service Commission. Does that kind of make sense? Okay? So what we do, there's a study in their Honeywell in 1983, 43 years in the commercial residential air conditionations, that's Larry Bar, that's kind of why I'm down here doing this, is back in those days, 10 to 15% of 60% of your power bill, in the summertime, 60% of your power bill is your HVAC. We're going to reduce, you know, the new coil surface is much bigger, that 83 study is now 15 to 18%. So we're going to impact the city with permission to clean the coils and reduce the power consumption in the summer months 15 to 18%. So that's the physics of it, that's the part of it. We appreciate Mississippi Power for letting us be a trade ally to represent them and let the public know about this program. Any questions?
Questions? Thoughts?
And you're just asking permission from the city to go out and solicit?
Correct. We, for, not for the commercial businesses, but for the city's businesses. You pick which buildings that you want us to do.
Okay.
Okay?
Our municipal buildings.
Not residential, not this, not, we're working on Randy to get that to happen next year. But we're kind of new down here. We've been doing a very similar program with energy, the energy footprint, for seven years. We're the largest company that does this type of thing, pretty much in Mississippi. There's another program that Randy has, is about converting fluorescent lightings to LED. Now, that's a whole nother program, that's not what I'm talking about, but there is another program. If the city has not converted some of its building to LED, then there's a program to address that also.
Who has that program, Larry?
Randy has it.
Randy has that?
He's in charge, he's in charge of both programs.
Okay, well, we can contact Randy, we see him frequently.
Yep, yep. I see, I talk to him three times a week. So like I said, if there's any questions, we're here to speak about everything and also get permissions. Now, we can do one unit on one building for use to test it and see it and so on and so forth. We could do a whole building, fire stations, police stations, public service buildings, anything. But if it's above, if the units are above 50 tons, we can't do that, because the software does not acknowledge that size of equipment.
Larry, let me ask you a question, as I understand this is a no cost to us, or it comes from-
That's correct.
And all the thing it does is serve to possibly save us 15 to 18% a month?
That's correct.
I'd entertain a motion that we approve this.
Motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Wait a minute, so if this program works, we don't purchase anything, what you've done is the savings.
That's right. Mississippi Power pays for everything. Okay, so, no.
You're cleaning the outside-
I'll send you a bill, Angie, if you want me to.
Well, the outside unit, inside-
Any evaporcoil, correct, outside condenser coils, insides evaporcoils, yes, we do both.
Don't duck work.
No, if we don't do duck work, that is a whole nother realm of the industry. They, and there again, you have people on with the city that knows a lot about HVAC, they can see us do it, they will work with our guy, look at what we're doing and so on and so forth. We will also give you the readings that we give to Mississippi Power. We'll do each unit on each building, and we will give you that equipment, that readings also.
All right, anybody else got anything? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Larry, I really appreciate you coming here, this is just another simple way that we're trying to find ways that we could save pennies-
Yes.
-that become dollars and long dollars.
Yep, and who do I need to talk to on a day-to-day basis going forward?
You will contact our building official, Mike. Mike is right here on the front row, Mike Gunlock.
Okay.
Larry, you could, you can, you can contact Courtney to get that information-
Okay, yeah, Courtney-
Because I know Courtney is-
Just text it to me, just like you did, okay?
Courtney has been our connection to Larry and Randy, so, to bring this to us and make this happen, so, we'll make that, Courtney will get that to you, and you and Mike can coordinate on that.
Yep, thank you, sir. One more thing I want to press again is, any of y'all, your churches, let them know about this program, everybody, everybody here, let your churches know, because since the pandemic, church offices are not open anymore, there's nobody there, it's hard to get in touch, you know, except on Sundays and Wednesdays, and we don't want to interrupt service by trying to look like we're selling something, you know?
I think our churches here are back open, staffed weekly.
Okay.
I will certainly let my pastor at First Baptist, and I've sent, y'all will certainly let the priest know, and other churches.
St. Thomas has got those swamp coolers that are-
Yeah, they got chillers.
Chillers, yeah.
Because like I said, small churches and big churches need as much help as possible.
Yeah, I don't know if I, at First Baptist, it's a big church, it may not qualify, but-
Correct.
But I'll certainly pass the information on and have them reach out to you, and they can share that information with you.
Thank you for y'all's time.
Thanks, Larry, I appreciate you being here.
Okay.
Great. All right. Next, we have Zeta Roof Repair Program, Mississippi Center for Justice, Ashley Richardson? Yeah, there she is.
My name is Ashley Richardson, I serve as the Director of Housing Law for the Mississippi Center for Justice. For you guys that just don't know, we are a nonprofit law firm. We have three locations, our main office is in Jackson, we have an Indianola location, and we are particularly located in Biloxi, the housing law campaign. So I am here today to ask you guys if we could partner with the city of Long Beach to provide a fair housing presentation, along with the heirs' property presentation. So our heirs' property campaign, they are located in Jackson, so what they do is they work with the community, it is a statewide campaign, as far as to prevent heirs' property issues. This is most known as Family Land. They help clear titles and help plan as far as estate issues. So this is the work that they do, the work we particularly do in the housing campaign in Biloxi. We have a grant provided through HUD where we do fair housing enforcement. We go out throughout the community and let the community know what the Fair Housing Act is, what possible violations could look like, and if you believe that your rights have been violated, you can reach out to our office and we can file HUD administrative complaint. So we are here to see if we can partner with the city of Long Beach, to see if we can do a presentation here in Long Beach.
Any, any discussion, any thoughts, any comments? I will just say this, I welcome this opportunity.
Thank you.
As you were speaking and you were explaining each program, I'm thinking of incidents here in the city that we would need help in both situations, and I think it's a great, great thing for y'all to reach out to us-
Thank you.
-and allow us, and I think that I would be asking within that motion and second to allow y'all to come into this meeting room.
Okay.
And you'd have to coordinate with Kenny for open dates.
Okay.
So we have courts in here and such, but we could figure that out.
Okay.
And we will welcome that.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Ashley, thank you so much for coming, a good presentation, and we appreciate you being here and helping us with this.
Thank you, and I'll be in contact.
Yeah, I'll get your email, I'll shoot you my contact information in the morning.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next, we have paving discussion, Alderman Brown.
I've been in touch with David about our asphalt situation. I know land shapers, that part was sold, correct me if I'm wrong, David, that correct? Land shapers asphalt was sold?
Far as I know, I don't think it's completely out of existence, but yes.
So we're still waiting on Pineville Road and Beetline Road, or Pineville Road all the way? Not all the way, but from, the first phase is from Beetline to A Avenue?
Well, to Espy.
I mean, to Espy, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
And we've got some other paving, we haven't given them the notice to proceed yet. My question is updates, and I asked you for an update.
Yeah, right, and so I primarily focused with the paving company, I asked them if they could be here, Mr. BJ Sellers with Gulf Pride is here, who is kind of who the city has agreed to allow to continue under those existing purchase orders for Pineville. He's here, I think he's ready to talk about when he could come for Pineville.
Yeah.
And then I think the city would decide at that, after that, since those were purchase orders that were already issued, after that work is performed, then the city could decide if you want to continue.
Is it Sellers?
Yeah, yes, sir. BJ Sellers.
Good afternoon, I'm BJ Sellers with Gulf Pride Paving from Gulfport. Just to clear up a little bit, land shaper still does exist, but they are not paving anymore. We did not purchase land shapers in whole, we did buy some of their equipment, and we hired some of their people. And also agreed in the transaction to try to help them complete any current projects that they had, if we were able to do so. And this Pineville Road project was one of the ones that we did discuss in the process. So if y'all are wanting to move forward, we would proceed with getting that job done. We're looking to schedule it probably around the middle of August. Would take us about a week and a half to complete, so if everything goes well, end of August, it would be done.
Okay, let me ask a question, as we're talking about West Pineville Road and Charlie Gant's development there, David, how about turning lanes going in that's going to be in his property? Is there any there, I thought we had discussed having one?
Did not require him until he sells X amount of prop, X amount of lots.
No, 200 yards for 50,000.
Pardon me?
Wasn't it when he sold the 200?
I can't hear you, Pete, I'm sorry.
Speak up.
I can't hear you.
I thought, could be wrong, that the agreement was when he sold number 200.
In the second phase, it's going to be $50,000, that's what he's giving us towards it, correct?
All right, and with that, remembering that, are we to do the turning lanes, or is he going to do turning lanes?
We are going to do them.
Okay.
We have nothing to do.
Remembering that, David, can we qualify this paving to happen in that area right now without causing damage to it when those turning lanes are put in?
I mean, that, yeah, when we build those turn lanes, I mean, certainly this work would be impacted, it won't, it wouldn't be destroyed, it just, you know, we'd have a wider Pineville Road and all of that other length, and then we'd have to impact it where we build turn lanes.
We'd have to do saw cuts.
Well, we don't really know if we can afford that turning lane right now either. So, and this project has been going on for about two or three months now, and it's getting no better, with people getting their mailboxes knocked down, I think there's been some accidents with mirrors being hit, so, I mean-
I'm just saying, y'all can do what you want, y'all vote, I don't, I'm just trying to bring out some things that y'all might want to consider.
I bet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care if we do it now or redo it again.
We could be a year down the road though, before we got the money to do a turning lane.
And that's what I'm trying to ask David, can we make a cut on the asphalt once we pave and make a good connection?
Absolutely.
All I need to know, y'all decide what y'all want to do.
I thought we had, I don't, I didn't think we needed to decide, I thought we had already said move forward with the project.
Yeah.
Have we issued the-
Yes.
Okay.
Notice to proceed, you issued the notice to proceed.
We've issued the purchase orders, which is the normal process for this turn bid.
Yeah.
Okay. Good to go.
Well, we appreciate you coming and knowing who you are and who the person is with the business.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. And for whatever it's worth, I agree with David that we could build those turn lanes and not damage the project, so.
Absolutely. That's, yeah, I mean, you know, that kind of construction happens all the time, you mill to allow for tie-ins, and then you overlay after the-
This is going to be widened at two feet also, everything that's in your, everything? Okay, so be in August.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Middle of August to start, be done by the end of August.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
That's what we're going to do, move forward with the other roads.
Well, I think-
Are we going to have to rebid, or?
No, no, we can still, correct me if I'm wrong, David, we can still issue the purchase orders after-
BJ, can you hold on for a second?
As long as the bid rises.
We still got some conversation going here, and I don't know if it's going to involve you or not, and I don't, or not, I don't want you getting out.
So after this part of Pineville Road, we have the Pineville Road from Five Points to Railroad?
Mm-hmm.
So that was on our, this year's budget to asphalt, and then we've got some more asphalt. Are we still going to move forward with this company, or that's going to be up to us, or what?
So those other two pieces would have been the microsurface, which, you know, I don't know if you recall, we talked a little bit about those, that's kind of non-conventional asphalt, it's putting down a very thin layer of asphalt emulsion. We'd need to coordinate with the county, that might be our best bet, you know, you may recall, we've worked through a lot of ways to procure that.
Yes, yes.
The county has recently rebid that, even though there was a time when they were not going to do that anymore, they've recently rebid that, and we could use that under an agreement, an interlocal agreement with the county to do that work. So it would not be, unless we're going to do conventional asphalt, which would be kind of outside of the city's paving plan that SMPDD provided to you guys.
So the Pineville Road from Five Points to Railroad Street was not conventional, it's going to be the micro?
It was going to be microsurface, and from Royal to Beetline was going to be microsurface.
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You got that.
Here, buddy, I might not be able to, I might not be able to call it, but it's in here. I could promise you. All right, you got, anybody got any more discussion on paving? Clear as the asphalt now, Mikey. Woo! All right. BJ, thank you for stopping and waiting, we need something, we'll get back, will you? Thank you so much for being here.
David has my contact information going.
I hate to be the one bearing news.
All right, next, we have harbor discussion, Alderman Brown.
Here again. Kind of wanting an update on where we stand on our harbor, I see where a company, or I don't know if they're pulled up, going to a different site to work, but most of the equipment's gone, and update us, David.
Okay.
And the corp, wherever you're at.
David, can you? Yeah, I can provide a little bit of info for sure, the contractor that's in question is Borees.
Okay.
I know all y'all know, because we have an approved change order for three restrikes to, or really for four, one of which has already been performed, for piles that are not performing correctly. The restrikes will be to find out what it's going to take to make them perform correctly, to get the strength that we need. That required some specialized underwater testing gear, that has been obtained, but while it was being obtained, Borees, they didn't leave the site, they've not abandoned, there's still a crane down there, they know they've got work to do, they're planning on coming back, but they went to another job while they were waiting for that equipment to be obtained. So we're still in the process of trying to coordinate when they would come back to do those restrikes.
So has it been done, the specialty work?
The-
Because what we talked about, I thought within two or three weeks' time, we was going to be done with that.
That is-
So we're not being updated, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Nobody's being updated here.
Okay, that certainly was, that was the thought, is that it would all happen pretty quickly, and they were there and ready. And every time we tried to line up to do it, and we had Southern Earth, the geotechnical company, come several times, ready to hook up their equipment, and the wave conditions and the weather conditions actually would, would have prevented, because it was not underwater capable.
Okay.
When Geotech-
Geotech, at that time, placed an order for what, $30,000 piece of equipment-
Yeah.
-to be able to do this, they just got that in, they're coordinating now, and they're about to come back in and make these strikes to get that measurement so we can move forward.
Okay, well, let me just say this, we have a harbor committee, I would really appreciate if they would be updated a little bit better, from either you or Andacorp or whoever, because we're getting, they pulled up, they're not going because of the weather, and that's all we're getting from you. So, you know, I'm sitting here thinking that this has already been done, because you told us two or three weeks, and then come to find out it hadn't even been done yet, so we're not getting any updates. So please, let's update a little bit better.
Okay.
I mean, we're getting those work updates, but further detail.
Okay.
What else, Mr. Brown?
That'll do it, just come on, let's update, will we update the public, we're now quitting, busting us.
I want y'all to understand now, with the weather, we've been having days where we're having four tides a day. And with those four tides, we're getting a lot of rough weather down there. That southern end's gonna be experiencing more rough weather than we are on the east side. So the east side should be coming along pretty quick. They've had some problems with their putting the pylons in, and they've gone back and got another method where they could disturb the sand to get it where they can get the pylons down, and they're putting, what, six to, six or eight a day now? They'll be moving along quicker. I think it takes them longer now to move their platform to be able to start new strikes. So that's gonna, that's gonna pick up in speed there on that side. But the outside right now, I mean, you know, you go out there and you could watch the wave action, and it's gonna be hard for them to get out there and construct the boxes that they're gonna have to have to be able to do their rebar work in and be able to make their connections. So it's gonna have to be a very perfect time. The perfect time would have been during the winter when we got strong northern winds.
Or the last ten days.
But we don't have it. Huh?
Or the last ten days.
Last what?
Ten days.
Ten days? You could go back, you could go down there, Mikey.
With ice.
But look on that south end. Go out there.
I did.
I mean, so...
Well, we do appreciate the company. Is it Southern? But whoever bought the equipment to speed this along, we appreciate that.
Geotech.
Geotech, okay. So that's much appreciated, so that at least it does, we don't have very many more delays. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that's right. Now they'll be able to perform it kind of regardless of weather conditions on the geotechnical side. The contractor will still have to face those same weather conditions with a crane in the air and the wind and waves. I mean, they'll still have to deal with weather.
Well, we appreciate the effort of what you've done so far to move it along.
Got anything else, Mr. Brown?
Communication.
All right. Next, is West Old Pass Road zoning issue. Alderman Frazier?
My turn.
Your turn, Mr. Frazier.
Specifically, I'm bringing this back up. It's 415 West Old Pass Road. We discussed before for Ms. Paula Spears. As a reminder, the property was annexed in to town. It was commercial, being used commercially, I want to say, as a hamburger place or...
Years and years, yes.
To something, to that point. But then she purchased it after it was annexed in and has been running her hair salon out of it. Ms. Paula and her business partner are looking to retire and sell the property now. In speaking, Mike spoke with Bill Hessel, and he says, you know, being that, the fact that it was used as commercial when it was annexed in, it's still a non-conforming property. They can sell it as commercial. It's just the aesthetics of the outside. Am I correct, Mike?
Cannot add to the building footprint at all.
It has to stay within its, and...
Hessel said they can operate any kind of business, but they cannot do any...
It's gotta remain the same, that's right. It's gotta remain the same footprint.
So for the fact of, the fact that this is gonna change hands, I wanted to bring it back up and make a motion that we approve it so that it's documented in our minutes for the property owner and future property owner, that they can go back and look at today's meeting. So that's my motion.
All right. We got a motion second to approve this, to where it can be used the same. Is there any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
Here, none, all is in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. The next one, we've got, we've got a letter here, donation of a new portion of Cux Road to, by the Long Beach Water Management District. I just want to get a motion and second of discussion, and then we could say it on action.
Motion.
Second.
I got a motion and second. I spoke with Marlon Ladner, our supervisor, and he was unfamiliar with this. He's not sure, and I'm not sure, that's why I talked to him, that the Water Management District has the ability to give us that portion of that road since they tore up the original Cux Road to be able to make a canal there. So I told him I wanted to just bring this to y'all, let you know what this is, what's going on. You know, and we don't, in my discussion with Marlon, I'm not sure what portion, there was a small portion of Cux that was in the city limits, but we're not sure how much. And I want, we both want to find that out before we bring this and accept. I told him I don't believe they have the ability to give us this road.
And it definitely needs to come with like a survey and all that before.
Yeah.
Maybe measure the table, just until we get more information on it. Second.
All right. We got a motion and second at table. Further discussion is, we both had discussion, who is the engineering firm who's doing the inspection on the construction? David, if you done any, any inspection on that?
I'm sorry, I was...
Don't doubt?
Yes, sir. So...
You know the Cux Road?
Oh, sorry. I do know the answer, so just wasn't paying attention.
[laughing]
Covington is the engineer on that. We worked with them during their design to make sure if they built the road, it would at least be built to city standards. So Covington's performed the design and construction inspection. We actually participated in a proof role with them. Everything looked fine, but we've not been involved in any kind of daily inspection whatsoever.
Okay. I will share that because Marlon and I were both unsure of what was going on. So I'm glad to hear that. We need, yeah. So, all right. We got a motion and second at table. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Department of Business, Mayor's Office. I've got something else that I discussed with Marlon, the striping commission and lower Beetline where we've Marlon said that he would try to have that done before school started, and that's my objective, to get this paving, the striping of this new paving, because you know, it's a mess out there. Even we got lines that tell people where to go. And if, he said, he said he would let me know by next Monday after their board meeting. If they're unable to do it, I would like to see if the board would give me approval. Let's do some temporary striping out there of some sort, because we got to have something when the school starts. It's, it's gonna be very, I mean, right now it's difficult for people to, some people to figure it out. Most people can understand it, but some people have problems with it, and I want to try to eliminate this problem as much as possible when school helps, or opens, rather.
When's it start?
Twenty ninth.
Week from Monday?
Twenty seventh, July twenty ninth.
July twenty ninth's opening day.
Monday, twenty ninth.
So who would, when you say, I was wondering, when you say temporary, you got, I mean, would that be something that Mike, y'all can do, or is that somebody?
I think we need, I think we need to get somebody to go out there and do something, but it's not gonna...
Right to the entrance there.
I'm talking about at the end.
Right.
And then, you know, I mean, certainly somebody knows they gotta keep it between the ditches.
Right.
But when they get down there to the intersection at Commission and Klondike, that's where we're gonna have the problems.
Right there by the school.
Yeah, and by the school, yes, thank you.
That's where it's, and I mean, they got police in the morning.
You got any money in your budget, Patrick?
No.
You sure? I think we need some school help.
Well, look, I met with Hunter for the meeting, and he said you did have money to help us with that, and he would get you tomorrow and make sure you got it done.
All right.
I mean, the only Hunter's already left.
Yeah, and Hunter's left. But I, you know, I don't even know if we can get somebody to do it between now and then, you know.
I think the best is to reach out to some striping companies and see prices.
Can you, you know, we're talking there by the school. We're gonna have to have something that can be removed so that when we, because we're going down with the thermoplastic.
Yeah.
And maybe you can get something to it, and I'd just like to have approval of the board for us. Get these prices. Let me give them to you. Give them a date of doing them, and once Marlon says they can or can't, if they can't do it before school starts, send out an email to y'all for approval.
So move. Good second.
Got a motion second for that approval? Any more discussion? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I have another one. We're talking about paving, and I couldn't bring it up while we were talking about Mike Brown, paving.
You need me to do something.
I need you to do something for me. Now, we've had, we have a situation in North Island View where we've got pavement on the very end, and we've got two big houses that down there on the end on the east side, but there's a section there of, how many feet did we come up with that would need to be paved there? Was it a hundred and...?
I don't know that we nailed down any particular length.
I'm with him. I don't think we nailed that number. But that was in front of two or three houses, so I would think it's more than two hundred feet.
I think we come up with less than five hundred feet.
In fact, I would think it's less than that.
So the base is good and everything?
Yeah, yeah. We got a base there, but we've got roads that's, it's bad. And, you know, and we took a beating because we've, we paved, what is it, Joyce or Rita, Rita?
We paved up to...
Up to North Island View.
Yes.
And that's where we need to start, right there at that intersection, and go to the north to get this finish off. It will not, I think if we discussed, it will not go all the way to that last property, but it'll go about fifty or sixty foot past.
Close, close to that.
Right. So I wanna, I want the board's approval to get a price on that and do the same thing as the striping. Come back to y'all with, with a cost on that and get y'all's approval to move forward with that, because this is something we need to take care of.
Yeah. Motion.
Second.
That, I mean, that's in our roads and it can come out of that fund, the road funds or whatever?
Come out the road funds, the...
Abs, I can't see why not. Okay. Just want to make sure.
Y'all gotta work with me, guys. I can't remember everything. So, all right. Got a motion second. And any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The road. I don't know where it starts.
I think that's all I've got. Courtney, you got anything else I need to, okay. All right. I will be sending out some information. Y'all all got your letter on arbitration. Okay. I want to make sure that's handed out, because I want to try to keep y'all informed on where we're at with that and when things will be happening. Okay. Moving on. Fire department has step increase of three, a resignation of one, and a part-time new hire. Police department has a step increase of three, a FTO pay of one, and the library has a step increase of one. A motion and second, discussion and approval?
Move.
Take it.
Discussion. Here, none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we've got city clerk. We've got revenue expense report, June of 2024. Motion and second for approval?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next, next we have administrative service agreement, Acuity Group of Mississippi LLC. This is pretty much a bookkeeping that has to do with insurance from Charlie though?
Our cafeteria plan reporting.
Cafeteria plan, yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead and explain.
Our cafeteria plan is offered through Life of Alabama, and Life of Alabama has coordinated with this Acuity Group of Mississippi to perform all of the annual reporting, and we have to contract with them to give them all that information. Any expenses will be paid by Life of Alabama.
No cost to us.
Are we, is this just one-year contract each year?
Yes.
Yes, it's just a bookkeeping situation, but just to explain it so everybody here know. Got a motion and second. Any more discussion? Here, none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have fire department. Steve, you got anything? Thank you. Police department. We've got a non-compensated special investigator contract, Mississippi Bureau of Narcotics. This is a yearly...
Yes, sir. We do it every year. We got an officer signing that.
That has to be updated. It's more of a simple paperwork, but it's got to be before the mayor and board for approval, so I will ask for a motion and second.
Second.
We got a motion and a couple seconds. There any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, for engineering, we got a project closeout, Troutman Basin Sewer Improvements. I'll have a motion and second for discussion and approval. You got a motion and a second? Andrew, was that you, huh?
Yes.
Okay. I heard you. All right. Discussion. This, this is the, the closeout for the lift station and Pineville Road intersection improvements there. David, this meets all, meets all your requirements and has completely been checked out, so...
So move.
Got a motion and second already.
You got a second one now? You got a second one now?
I got my third.
Back it again.
That one in your pocket to use later.
All right. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fee adjustment, over streeting associates, Troutman Basin Sewer Improvements. Any motion and second for discussion and approval? All right. Discussion. Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mike, you got anything for Public Works?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Recreation, Bob?
We're good. We, my main air conditioning unit for the gym went down today. Don't know what it's gonna cost to fix. Hopefully it's just the motor, and I've already got it removed, and we're looking for a spare motor. So hopefully that's the extent of it, and I'll keep you updated tomorrow.
I would say that considering that's gonna be our house of refuge for rehab and meals with hurricane season, in case we do have a storm here, that I would, I would say get what you can quickly on that, and so we could get it to board, and that's another situation I may have to, to send out for y'all for approval if the cost is too much, and get the ability to get it replaced or repaired.
Right now, it's just a gym unit. Everything else is functional, so we're, hopefully we'll be back up and running tomorrow. I'll keep you updated.
And understanding during event, if we have anything big and bad, that full gym could be used and would be used. So, all right. Anything else?
Yep, we're good.
Okay. Building office. Mike, we've got a subdivision ordinance change here. I'll entertain a motion and second, discussion and approval?
Motion.
Second.
All right. And discussion. I think this is pretty self-explanatory. We're increasing the radius of our cul-de-sacs and the, where it's measured from in the distance.
Correct.
Correct. And it goes from fifty foot to fifty-eight foot on the radius, and from forty to forty-eight foot on the curb. Any more discussion? Here, none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Emma, you got anything from court?
Yes, sir. We're good.
Okay. Harbor, Harry? Okay. Community fairs?
Yes, I have a few things. Ms. Charlene in the mayor's office, as well as the building department, has the 2024 Hurricane evacuation guide. We have it in three different languages if anybody is needing that map and some information regarding hurricane season. We also have the summer splash at the Town Green this Saturday from twelve to one with the fire department. Then we also are having free summer lunches hosted by Harrison County School District this week from eleven to one. That address is 102 North Gerard Avenue. Anyone under the age of eighteen is encouraged to come and get free lunch this week. And then we also have two ribbon cuttings at two new businesses, once tomorrow and once Thursday.
Okay. Now, the free meals that's put on by Harrison County, they, let me refresh, and hopefully Kenny gets this where the people who's home can hear this and could be affected with this. It'll be over on North Gerard at 102, and their time will be from twelve to two?
Eleven to one.
Eleven to one. I really got that messed up, didn't I? So y'all go eleven to one.
Yes.
And under eighteen, or under, or under eighteen?
Eighteen and under.
Eighteen and under. And there's certainly families out there that could take advantage of this, and I would encourage you to. We have two ribbon cuttings this week and...
Summer splash on Saturday at the Town Green.
Thank you. It just doesn't stick. Okay.
Mr. Matt, can I add one thing that Courtney brought to my attention? I just want to make sure everybody saw it. Courtney on Facebook posted the picture of Ms. Pam Sanders at Bacchus.
Oh, yes, her mural.
The mural. Well, WLX did an article on, on there today. Just want to commend Courtney for sharing that and bringing some good attention to the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
I've got a letter here I need to pass to y'all. It's pretty much asking for donations, and I want to pass it to each of them, each one of you, and see if we could individually, see if we could donate for this. We have a, I think it's a...
Baseball.
Uten baseball or group that is going to regional, and this is something that happened, hasn't happened in Long Beach for a while, to have a team that's, you know, we're talking about a rec team, and our rec league is growing, if I'm correct, Bob. And I think, you know, if we have an opportunity, let's need to, you know, think about this, and this letter will be going down, and we'll come, come back and ask y'all to look at that. We have no derelict properties. Steve, do you have anything for us, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. I would ask for a motion and second to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all. Very good.